Well, it's nine o'clock. Please stand and pledge the plea. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments first. There we go, about to hear first.
This was a physical uniform.
This is your audit last year.
For last year. The main part of it on this back footage. Maintenance of accounting records that was resolved all the problems they had. It was a good report actually. Time to dispose of the residue revenues unresolved. This has been taken care of now or it was they were keeping the money too long. If you want to put in the bank the next day, the next day. Cash collection was unresolved. What that was, we're taking care of that now. They did, like if you ordered a hot dog and a bottle of coffee, they put a dollar for you. If you order two hot dogs and a bottle of coffee, there's a dollar fix. They wasn't breaking it down. They just, anyway, somebody can just be taking the money. They didn't ever know because they didn't put anything out except two dollars, two dollars. So that's been taken care of. Control of the finance statement preparation, that's been resolved. Everything is good.
This is for Jane.
And. Mr. Jefferson, you were eating, take care of Russell.
Uh, there's 12, 2012, 2013. That's where, you know, we had different directors at different times. So nobody was really sure how to turn in their money before like the trackers convention went and fed them food. They just turned in a whole sheet with a sticker note that said, "We made a thousand dollars of food," or five hundred, whatever. So he wanted to break it down. So this year, that's what we've done with three Chicago spreadsheet. So that's what he's talking about. Uh, just want to say thanks for the support for the elimination dinner. It was a huge success. Uh, we sold all 300 tickets and we also had gotten donations from people that didn't want to necessarily buy a ticket because they didn't gamble, as they said. So we took in $6,438 for the whole night. And then, uh, $338 was what it cost to put the thing off, such as food and the decorations and the advertisement in the newspaper. So we still come out, uh, sixty-one hundred to the good towards the bathroom. And with that being said, I'm just sending an email here to pipe. It's not really good. It's not her fault. It's, uh, the picture of the bathroom. Can you share their email? I'll give it. This is where we're wrapped right now with the bathroom and the office. So the inmates are doing a fantastic job. And we also got the letter, got it approved, Cindy wrote the letter to the prison and we are approved to December 15th with the inmates. So basically that's the last month. That's just all we've been doing there is laying out the bathroom. Uh, the cabin roofs, we finished one. We're going back to do the blue cabin if it dries off to do the trim edges on that. So that's just not really all we have time to do.
Now we got the hunters. We got the bird seven for hunters this year. So we like to stress that. All these mothers, grandma, their husbands, friends and sons, friends are coming and staying with it. I'm not correct, I was, but cheap. And we have pancake dinner, October the 19th. And 7.50 for adults, five dollars for children under ten. And that's about the time.
Eight AM to 1 PM. It's buckwheat pancakes, regular pancakes, sausage biscuits and gravy. Eggs, bacon, sausage, Danish milk, coffee, tea for 7.50 buffet all you can eat. So that's a pretty good deal. Dave got our site today and Randy, I don't know if you can get that in the paper this week or not because this is the last week.
I can probably manage.
Could you do that? We appreciate it. Like I asked, like we did for the elimination dinner.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, we did pay for the audit ourselves this year. Direct Center did. That's the first time in about 15 years Direct Center paid for an audit. Three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. All right, see ya. Hey, Dave, thank you. Randy, thank you.
All right, Pat.
Hi.
The golden trees.
The golden tree, I guess.
Let me bring you up to where we are.
That's why I came.
That's why you came.
That's why I came.
Of course, we've, we've been up and looked at them. So I know your, your concern. We requested mon power to cut them. They are going to cut this one. Greg Cindy.
Yes, I see the pink ribbon on it.
Okay.
Well, Aspen or however many, they called me. I don't know how I got my cell phone number, but they called me.
We're going to see how that works out before we go any further. Because they'll probably have to take some of the others. That is the worst tree.
That's fine.
But that, you've got one coming down. And I would think they would have to take some of the, some from around because they're interplanted. So.
Yes.
Let's see how that goes.
Okay. Do you know when they're going to do it or?
They don't let us know. I mean, it's.
The indication should be fairly soon. It's not like way down the road. They have given us a definite date. They just said it should be fairly soon.
All right, it's.
That's progress, yes.
Yeah, then there's progress.
It was the worst one.
Yes.
And the one. Let's see.
Really, as far as the seven trees, the first four are the ones that go along all the power lines like to the traders and are over top the traders or over top my house. The other ones, they are getting out of hand, but.
Compared to me, they are 100% box delved trees.
Yeah, and they're trouble. So, I mean.
They're just my worst tree.
Yes, they are. A hundred percent. They are worthless.
But they do break buildings.
And they do.
Yes, they do. And that's why I'd like to have them all gone, but.
Well, let's, let's see what happens. That's, it will be better than what it is now.
Yeah.
And the odds are they'll wait till they may have two or three projects here. I think they've got a couple others here in town. And they'll just come do them all at the same time.
Okay.
So, um, just like Cindy was saying, it's kind of hard to tell. They won't give us an exact date because the weather could change depending if we have a storm or something go through, but I'm sure they'll get to it as quickly as they can.
Okay. I'll be back and get an update.
If we find out anything else on our end, send me, close by, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We've got, wait, we've got five minutes to wait please. So we've got you at nine fifteen. So let's, uh, let's look at exonerations and exhalations. None? State qualifications, settlements?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, uh, state qualifications and state service.
Second, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passes. Board appointments and or resignations.
I would, uh, like to appoint Nancy McVaney to the ambulance supporting for the city effective November 1st for a three-year term.
Beginning November 1st for a three-year term. I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay, motion passes.
Make sure that's something known. We appreciate your.
Yes, we will. We should do those sometimes. But we want to get very, I can't get an ambulance support meeting this Thursday. So you're kind of like, that's my phone starting to work first.
Once you got time to do that last meeting.
I'll try to find out how many years. Yes, that'd be great. I will try to find out how many. I wish you certainly could pass me for many years. Now, do we have any open seats on any boards?
The unsecured is, unfortunately, she still has two of them seats.
And they need capital de cap, Troy, and Sanford. Okay, let's move down to commission minutes. They're a little tight there. That gives minutes for August 12. We're not prepared for the September 2nd, September 17th, not prepared the first, but we are ready for August 12.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for August 12.
Second, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passes. And we have no county board votes for any new agencies.
Can you get in the building for Buck and Ball brief?
Okay, we're close enough to that. Laura, you have a presentation.
I have a confirmation. I'm, who was still at the Hoover County Health Department and this is so helpful. She's with Penny Hill. And we both, both facilities do the breast cancer, um, providers that we have. And I just want to read that proclamation and process. In 2014, a nest of women, 1,340 women, will be diagnosed with breast cancer approximately 289 weeks old. Die from the disease. Breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer related death among most recurring women. A woman has about 12% chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and about 3% chance of dying from the disease. Partly the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is to early detection of the disease. Women age 50 and older should have a mineral grain at least every two years. Women ages 40 to 49 should talk with their healthcare provider about the screening schedule. Clinical breast exams by physician owners are recommended every three years for women in their twenties and thirties and every year for women 40 and over. Breast self-exam is an option for women starting in their twenties. Women should be told about the benefits and limitations of breast self-exam. What's the breast exam look like? Breast self-exam, the mayor's hands can say yes. Women should talk to their healthcare provider about the individual's screening schedule. And I have two of them. It's not one for myself and one for her.
If one of you gentlemen's make us move, adopt this proclamation.
No move.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passes. Where would you like, which one of those lines? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I stand.
Okay, um. Let's place some bills.
You don't have some other reports in that folder, bills that are even paid? You were expecting different reports or not?
Yeah, that's going to be more higher than. It's hard to tell. I read them. Yeah, thinking of the rates.
Yeah.
Kind of working out what it did this proclamation. Before I have sort of thoughtful, maybe skedusken for a week.
Absolutely. Pretty much, let's do it if you want.
So I want to watch the budget. There's only so much money budgeting.
Yeah.
At what stage did it?
Did you change your testing card? Is your?
No, we had to change it to the 17th. But he came, he's like doing machines in church, working properly and everything today. But we had to change it to the 17th at 10 o'clock.
Let's watch the, they used to be all very good. No.
No, they weren't saying.
That's two months.
Yeah.
I want to note on that step, this amount, the 12 oh three oh 17th is the balance of the insurance money. So you, you guys said that we would pay up to the formal, the insurance, anything above that, we're not plus that.
Right. Right. I thought when we were just, didn't we, although we were just.
Right, we're just all the way, yeah, the 12 five.
Right.
The, they're, they're picking up the difference.
This is how much is left, 12,030 dollars and 17 cents.
I thought we agreed to just pay the golf course money and anything you did on above that day. What would be eligible for? That person not that there is what we agreed to.
Right. That's what I had thought. But it's still up to the ceiling. I mean, it's, the claim is what the claim was, whatever.
That's what this 12, okay, I thought you had said we're going to pay what the claim was.
That's correct, but I think we were paying to the golf club and the golf club's going to carry, pay their bills and they see fit.
Okay, so you want to check that to the golf club, not to frame, the balance of the insurance.
Can't do that, huh? Have to have, you have to pay to the invoices for them. We can't write that check to the golf.
I understand that, but that's.
And I thought they were going to.
They'll have to pay the difference. We would pay the balance of the claim.
Oh, sure, yeah, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry. I'm, yes, agree.
So the check is going to frame or the golf club?
Well, it's from an insurance claim. It might as well go to frame rather than direct to the checks.
Either way, at this point, since this big campus.
Yeah, it's an insurance claim and.
We just want to make sure we adjust that in our minutes because I think at our last meeting, we agreed that we could just pay right straight to the golf club. And then the bureau will submit the invoice. We just need to amend that.
Okay, uh, so you want, you want to pay directly to the golf club?
No, we're okay with paying at this point, but we wouldn't.
I mean, sorry, to frame. And do you want it for the 12 five or the 12,030?
If all that's left in the claim.
All that's left.
Is 1230, that's it. That's what we pay.
And then they're responsible for the balance.
Right.
So how do you want, do you want, how do you want the minutes amended?
Just that, I guess they submitted bills to us and we'll just amend that to, I'm not going to pay the golf club directly, I'm paying the bills.
Or you can move right.
Just move it right now.
Move it right now that we are going to send the, uh, check directly to the contractor. We've gotten the bid for the remaining amount.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and say, uh, rip frame, or I'm sorry, uh, frame all social services at the amount of 12,030 dollars and 17 cents, which is the balance of the insurance claim for the, uh, plan to make for the damage to the golf.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passes.
So you still need to amend the. So you still need to amend, or is it not yet approved?
No, no, we'll accept it when we're, changed already, right here.
And by the way, just for your information, the work has started at Tanner on that insurance claim. It was much smaller.
What was that bill we got for Eric Queens?
That was the...
That's part of it.
Part of it.
That's what I thought.
About the material part, but I mean, they've actually started, uh, working on it.
Who's this?
That received Sumner.
Rusty Sumner, there was an electrical problem in the annex yesterday. A fuse had shorted out, and they, somebody over there called him to come.
You're going to take a break and get Pam out here, since she doesn't...
Yes, it is. Yes, it's not, Pam, are you ready?
Pam has called me for confirmation, she wants to have Pam read the two simple forms.
In this position, I can see over there. National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, and sexes. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to their systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. Whereas in our country, more than three women are murdered by their husbands or boyfriends every day. Whereas children who grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. Whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. Whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this teeniest crime. Now therefore, the Gilbert County Commission hereby proclaims the month of October twenty fifteen to be National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to participate actively in the scheduled events and programs to eliminate the use of personal and institutional violence against women.
Make the motion, then, Dr. Proclamation.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion passes unanimously.
We have a series of questions for you, but we'll leave those till next time.
Well, you are without points, aren't you?
Who would stop being here, Cindy? Just anything, anything good. Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, thank you, have a good film, bud.
Thank you so much.
Cindy, whoever we need, say something to get this here to the man, because that was an extra hundred dollars in late charges.
Again, last night they were late too. Thanks for these for handling this morning, I think I did work it, like, what they aren't really things are. But last night, they did the same thing, they came and brought in their own commission back.
They have two months to work, that's what.
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars.
Do you have that smart?
Over.
You got the same one, electric bill too. Let me see those there.
Well, during, they will go to office office box, Rita gets it out of the box, and then I guess takes it to general, so I don't know what the time is between the events.
Well, we need to say something, it's a lot of money, it will run out.
We almost got it, won't you?
Just remind me here, just a little bit, when we get done, I'll just call right down. Didn't we already pay four twenty-three thirty-six with the charade rate?
It, that's a debt for Angel to see back now, parent quarter of the money, our legal files. I don't think that was, that amount that wasn't previously settled. He approved the payment, but not, it wasn't included in the settlement. For the...
Oh, no, no, I don't know.
So you decided we didn't already pay?
Did already what?
This bill, which was, did we already?
That was a note for Angel, we don't know.
I told that he would took that off, because everyone he about that.
Yeah, darn it.
Ask him about it, because I think he took that off of there, and then he got it, but he didn't get it after.
We could sort of, we could get more detail than that. Well, that wouldn't work.
Can you see if you do the same, if I have the same somewhere, invoices, I don't know. What would you like us to?
Well, there needs to be, on one of three, there needs to be more detail than that. If all, I've got one in my room right there.
Well, that's the contractual mail, you know that.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
That's where I, yeah. Is he not out yet?
No. He's usually a bit contractual.
I think maybe they might have the D's out of there. The, was Jack Eater out of there?
He didn't charge.
He didn't charge. But, I think he was set up on that.
He was set up, but he didn't take him out.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
He said, I agree, he works excellent now, that's a minute. One or two minutes.
There's now, there's no sudden amount of dollars in contracts, it's, whatever's needed.
Still a long year, so it's in the...
One pan? Talk to me, we'll let her.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that was for last fiscal year, we received. Which is why Angel's phone heard how because we didn't receive it last year, that's why we're having to re-budget, because that balance carried forward was short. But right there was the biggest culprit, was a hundred and ten of a hundred and forty.
I was at that meeting the other day, and you may already know this, Dave, but I was at the meeting the other day at Jackson's Mill, um, for CONSOL. And they have a hundred and twenty wells per minute, and Troy, Bayous, back over in Mead House Fort, in that little triangle, they've got, CONSOL alone has got a hundred and twenty wells per minute there, ourselves though.
In that area, how many are there dealing with?
Uh, I looked at that map, and they didn't have them all marked, but there's all, I'd say thirty percent of them.
Does Lois charge a penalty?
Huh?
Does he always charge a penalty?
You know, I don't know, I, it wasn't at the, it was a meeting at Jackson's Mill, CONSOL.
No, like, I'm a chart, and you're all for that. I didn't approve that NACO line for payment, just wanted to make sure you still wanted to continue membership, I'm not... Already setting a discount on the...
Yeah.
Yes, so I'll wait for her to tell me what the last rate was, because that's the standard, that one and a half is the standard, that's his maximum standard rate.
It was ten and a half, it was nine and a half, wasn't it?
I think it was nine and a half.
Yeah.
I really don't know anything we saved last year by being a member, I'm not aware.
It's a dental vision for NACO. What's the association funding?
Used to be. Used to be, didn't it? The association hasn't, you're done with them?
Yeah. Both of them all work down the vision, which one ours is through.
Well, I read on the back, it said, "This report provides a detailed summary of services and dollars your county has received as a direct benefit from Dean and Member of NACO, estimated annual savings twenty eleven zero, twenty twelve zero, twenty thirteen zero, twenty fourteen zero."
That's what I looked at.
Let's hold on to this, I don't know about it, please. I didn't hear how the turnout loves all the radio shots, anybody, I don't have dogs.
I think it was a discount on the second public data coming out, but we don't.
The second was always, she had open first.
We won't get a second one, because we're only running it one week.
Should be a discount on that one, I believe.
We want to know who somebody provided, really, on that. Is it somebody's county too?
It is amazing.
We need to go down there. Yeah, it's a never-ending top. It's like a little song about the pyramid scheme.
Is, is this, I'm trying to ask, is this one, I often wonder, is this, uh, set up where we can actually, so did they do a year-end financial balance sheet or anything, emergency services? Is there any?
I mean, OEM? No, but all their budgets went through our budget, so we would all...
But there's a large portion of it that's grant money.
It is, so we make all upfront, and we budget for the whole amount.
But we don't get, it's not one hundred percent grant money.
Fifty percent.
We have our monies and all of that also, I'm just curious what that breakdown is.
Yeah, we budget a hundred percent, and then the grant for fifty.
Is that what that is?
I don't know.
So, did I hear you say it's fifty percent, so it's pretty much just fifty cents on the dollar?
I don't know.
Yeah, she's wanting permission to pay, I, I appropriate that portion of it.
It just means it may written to the state.
It's when they should come off of our bill, the state bill.
It's when they should have come off of our, this bill?
When they go to state, they should come off our bill. But sometimes I find when I call and inquire, there's other things involved, there may be other charges.
There's some still in our county bill.
No, it's sometimes.
Which one are you asking about?
Well, there's these ones, you got to the state, to the state, to the state.
There are, I have three different ones on here that I don't want to research on, and there's some real questions about like, why there's still one there, how many of things being signed, things being said.
I don't understand what I heard, I asked her.
I don't know.
Why, we don't pay us?
Well, why do we pay taxes accounting? Because I looked into this a couple of years ago, when first all poverty taxes run at one of the Tanco Lees. They send out business returns to those companies. So if they're paying the tax, then there are charges of tax, so it washes out. They charge them, we pay them, they pay us. If they're not being filed, if they're not being billed a tax return, a property tax charge, then we do have to remove it, because we have a tax exemption.
So we're sure where their payment was banked?
Yes, I verified that one in his office, in the tax office, I verified that one, and the Tanco lease. For the funds, they were charging property tax once a year also.
Ben, the jail bill's twenty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents. I'll get something turned in, maybe an or other. We've got a bit of that worked out, we're going to get that grant. That may be something that you could...
I'm sorry.
That'd be something we need to look at, see if we can apply that grant, that little bit of money we had left.
Yeah, yeah. They freaked that out.
We weren't looking at it. We shouldn't say no.
That's right.
Sometimes we say the failed grant, because it's it's still in the scope of work, we're coming to rip from the grant. Right where they did the install.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the jail people.
All right.
I wonder.
No, we're talking about this boiler repair, the water, the money.
Do we add about five or six to the money?
From the boiler in the old jail, that and that different money can pay this.
Okay, so you want me to put this in this little changoscope?
Yeah, I think I would.
So, and figure out what you want to do with the rest of it, and we'll...
How long will we have to do that, what's our time?
Uh, I think shoot her. A fifteen.
A two.
We don't get any rest up. Who's getting this part?
I think, I think maybe someone did it again, she'll sort it back out.
See. Okay, I might get that part.
It's interesting, we're not saying, uh... Things are new.
We gotta put it in. That's already went through, that's just the cover.
All right.
Off the one that Chris did. Wow, he came to Bardem up through the water. The day before, remember? Tell me how everything worked out.
Are you going?
They love the way it wasn't fixed, it's all worked out. I bet fair.
Okay.
That good, isn't it?
This is just the August bill, I think it was just... I'll leave this up there.
Getting the pab jeans out of there is what I'm saying here.
Do what?
Send the beer one nice.
Where's this?
Did it all with him? I did. Get the other leg, this leg will be... Wash your mouth, I'm gonna see you through. I keep my fingers out of my truck. Getting handy this morning.
Did I bring that one over there?
Well, there's rains that turn cold, you been out in any areas?
I've been out this week.
I forget, it's a little cold, you know, and it just, definitely, it's fall, that rain's cold, I mean cold cold. On Saturday, it ain't gonna be Saturday. Yeah. Maybe a little ball of ice.
Yeah.
All right. Two more hours, okay?
A little bit.
Yeah. I like to get them up early first, though.
Well, we got to a lot of things.
I want to call you. You have a great day for everybody. You have one meeting now there.
I do not, I'm here now, I...
Okay, great. O F S. And I knew that.
Send me something with your copy, can you do that? Yeah, probably, yeah, I looked the other day at the copies, there was almost nothing there.
There's your approval for bills to pay.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passed, unanimous. Okay.
We did not have a pedal today. Do you like me to get a pedal to you? Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's, uh, we'll have to have Angela, Angela want to come over? China, I know she has budget revisions.
Yes, she does. She does.
Can you carry the mail ahead, some of this unfinished business, Shane?
What's going on?
Yes, please.
Okay, and our unfinished business, the Willard Cottrell estate.
We have spoken with someone who's willing to settle that estate. Just a matter of a notice and a settlement statement, and we believe that it can be settled. So I'd like to suggest you consider Linda Huff to a special fiduciary to settle that estate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, all opposed. That's a very specific today.
It's gonna happen again, because I called for a motion.
We, we appointed, they appointed Linda Huff as a special fiduciary commissioner to the Willard Cottrell estate.
Step on present.
We received all the documentation from the last person. Brian moved, and I seconded.
Is it H U F F?
H U F F. I don't know if you recall, Linda was in the prosecuting attorney, Jay Carroll's office for a long time. So you're optimistic she will settle this. Okay. Recreations, oh, I'm sorry, Angela, let's go ahead and vote you right now.
Okay, we do have a revision, actually, we have, we have four hundred and thirty-three hundred dollars. Then about five thousand from a state grant moving it to four hundred, basically, in the fifty-four seventy-five, five thousand from state grant to take the water. We've broken out the current, the nine, and then the five thousand to the cop part. So fifty dollars for the area to manage the cost of the income, the amount of food, the cost of the child.
Ask them three questions.
Okay. And this one, I decreased our, I found about five hundred and fifty thousand five dollars. And then increased our overall cash account, thirty thousand three hundred and three and a hundred and forty-two hundred and five, which reduces our cash flow by one hundred and ten thousand. Um, I increased our federal grant, fifty-six hundred and five, we got like fifty-six hundred and five more. And our state grant, thirty-three thousand two hundred and one. Our, um, we have plus two, we have two, which is to credit this as our contract. And also share bond, and that's just a two point four, that's a point four. Then our wild child, one hundred and thirty-six hundred and five hundred, I increased our fifth one, so it is five dollars. Okay, that's a jail. Five dollars, seven thousand two hundred and ninety, because I'm in that, so I have to... And then we have, we have one thousand two hundred and five, which is about four change, so I have to clear the line for that. Our reimbursement for like all some more education, we have to like that, that's it. I'm sure you're in line for the thing. Also, please join your thing, if you're not thinking about any time, you have a couple of days, a lot of time.
I would move to approve the budget revisions.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passed, unanimous. That's what I was talking about, you know, when we, this budget we just started, we budgeted that as being what our carryover would be. Well, we're short this, one hundred and forty-two, well, that one hundred and forty-two, you just heard there, that one hundred and ten oil and gas, that was special, we should have got last year.
Correct.
Which would make a lot less. There's something we need to break out, it'll probably be a good time to break up. Down in your new business, order create West Virginia Conference. We want to work with the college, because the college was a great partner for us, and budgeting the money to help us have, pass cleanups during the summer, and they did this summer. And I think it was in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, correct? Well, we want to be a good neighbor and a good partner, and we want to somehow get that twenty-five hundred back to help this create West Virginia. And we want to do it, we, we know we're gonna have to find some money there somewhere in this budget. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, we'll be back in here, but we would like we would like, like, take action today to do that.
The project number fifty dollars, which is a contribution, which is what you got through, like, if they need. After I instead of budget revision approved to the state office, I will do it in my schedule. I will write a report, she will ask generally to do that, and kind of refresh it.
Okay. Check out our training and education budget, I think we should have some monies in that. Good. See, I, I think we're gonna be good, so... Well, we would like to go ahead, this, this create West Virginia Conference, it's, it's here, it's now, it's before the end of the month, we need to...
I would move that we would give twenty-five hundred dollars to recreate West Virginia Conference, what they call.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passed, unanimous. But we do, we need to pay up to us, we don't need. But we do, we need, they helped us, they helped him. Yes. Seven fifteen, twenty-five hundred. Is Brian kidding you, you can say that's the seventeen fifty?
Sure, I think that.
Recreation Center gas bill from Hayden Harper.
So they indicated to us that they were going to rework their accounting once they discovered that the rest of the network was supposed to get free gas. And that they'd be contacted by us another week. Uh, just a few days ago, on the first, Mr. Dawkins, from Hayden Harper, contacted me and said, if you haven't forgotten, their accounting department's still working on it. Have to have some nothing, so we're saying.
But we know it's going to be a lot less, because they did allow the, what is it, two hundred thousand cubic foot of free gas.
No Dawkins as well. By all indications, they gave me there somewhere about half. That's enough to get changed.
Okay, we already talked about the golden trees. You need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I need, I thought we did have the budget revisions, we did.
Oh, yeah.
Brian, move.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's all right. This, uh, possible changing in smoking location, this has been on our agenda a couple of times. Hopefully, on the way out, we can review a possible proposed place, and then we'll make a decision, yes or no, the next meeting. Is that fair enough?
Motion to table the designated smoking, I move to table the designated smoking location till the next meeting.
Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, made, motion pass. Jane, I think this was your homework, to find out what the financial impact of an increase in paying poll workers would be.
At forty-five dollars.
At forty-five dollars, seventy poll workers, that is, would be an amount of three thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Of course, we didn't budget money for it, but I would suggest we put this with our, in our file. We'll be working on our new budget four months from now, hopefully make that change for next year's budget. But that's all right. New business. The testing of the imitronic and optical scan will be October seventeenth, ten o'clock a.m., in commission room. All right, number two's on there again. We're, we approved that bill? Or that's a second bill, seventy?
It's a second bill. If you approve one, I'm not aware of it, unless somebody asks about, about copy of the bill. This is brought to us by the, by the AMS. It's from the North Central Regional AMS, it's a, it's a membership, it's a membership fee, it's based on your county population. It's like, that's, I guess it is. Anyway, this is the bill for four thirty, four sixty-five, the AMS was asking the commission to pay it, as they have in the past. I pulled out information from last year that kind of shows what that membership does.
I don't remember anything about this.
Yeah, you, you paid it last year, this is actually a thank you from last year's.
Considering, considering the fact that we're paying the rent on the firehouse, why don't you allow me to take that to this week's meeting and ask them to begin paying this?
I was going to ask you, whether they're possibly gonna pay that.
Okay, I'll, I'll take, we meet Thursday at five.
If, if an office brings it back.
Right.
I'll make a copy of that, what's involved in membership, so I can keep that here.
I'll, I'll take all of that other information you gave me on the bylaws. I'll, I'll take that.
I move that we would table the payment of North Central Regional Emergency Medical Services bill till the next meeting.
Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, made, motion pass, unanimous. Continue, Cindy.
The Clinton Democrat, Pat Spine, is submitted to you for West Virginia Code, their annual filing of their circulation rate. And the, the rate that they will be charging for their legal publications. To my knowledge, the publication rate is, is unchanged from previous years. Circulation's probably different, but still falls within the guidelines that they are able to charge us the legal rate. Received a letter from the State Treasurer's Office regarding the coal bed methane severance tax. Uh, that has been received, I believe it just came in yesterday, in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents.
Is, I'd ever like to assume, is that something that we actually budgeted in this current budget, is revenue, we would be getting, or is this?
Yes, we did budget for that. And there are restrictions on how that money can be used. Can't tell you offhand, telling you what they are, it's restricted.
Open the recreation center truck bids.
Did not receive any.
We don't have it. And we follow the letter of the law, we open it up to people to bid on it, so we're left now, we can leave it to the rec center board of directors to do with, and the commission proceeds to go to their budget. Probably, we have to have a motion to vote. Second. It's been moved in second. Having received the bids, the rec center would be allowed to dispose of the old truck, the proceeds go to their budget. All in favor say aye. Opposed, made, motion pass, unanimous.
We have a letter from the Department of Agriculture concerning the accessory certification and compliance, that he has completed the farm census of two thousand thirteen. And therefore is eligible to receive compensation from the county court. It's ten percent of his salary, which amounts to four two two four. So we'll need to have you to approve that repayment.
There was a motion.
There was a motion, sir.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, made, motion pass. Doesn't say on here in the AM, oh, there it is, four thousand two hundred and five dollars. State doesn't tell you what it is. Can we, can we do that figure here?
You say it for me.
Can we talk to that area?
Seven nine two.
Can you tell us that you made this time of year, the next fiscal year?
I spoke with him again recently.
Not gonna happen.
That'll happen. Okay, uh, anything else under new business? Cindy, I meant to ask you yesterday to update on the basement project.
Okay.
I should give you some more, speak about that.
But, no, there's, there's not, not a lot, it's slated to start beginning in November.
Okay.
Uh, we reached all the budget agreements, as you, as you know, that we can do the project within the grant funds that we have, plus the county match.
Is there a contract or anything been prepared to do?
The, um, architect's firm sent the contract to Daniel. And I said a couple of days ago, she was waiting to receive a copy back, and she went forward to copy.
All right, so that's maybe four. Anything else, gentlemen? Our next meeting will be on the twenty-second of October, Wednesday, nine a.m.
For the liveo regular meetings, the twenty-second, when you have come up on the seventeen?
Right, we mentioned that. Did we need to take action, set a special meeting, or is that what you're requesting?
We're for the I though.
Okay. The motion would be in order, I mentioned that October seventeenth, ten a.m., liveo testing, the motion would be in order to call. You want special meeting to that day, we didn't do that in the past. Okay. About public, okay.
Everything ready.
Public notice, all right, the motion wouldn't be in order to call special meeting for that purpose.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, made, motion pass, unanimous.
To make sure everybody's aware that that Wednesday, Act Number Twenty-Second meeting will be over in the annex, uh, in the courtroom, if it's not in use. Because there'll be early voting in here.
Good. So it's not in the commission room?
No, not the twenty-second, the seventeenth will be.
Seventeenth will be. Good. That our county commission meeting will be in?
In the annex, in the courtroom.
In the magistrate's, we're going downstairs. All right, didn't we have one there?
Yeah, they, they reserve it, but if something, an emergency type situation comes up, they have to have it, then we go to the chair.
Anything else, gentlemen, on your mind?
The total bills that were approved today, hold on, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-two cents.
We only paid one jail bill. It's all we approved, I will make sure of that. We approved one?
I haven't got here to make sure that August is all we paid.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the press?
Move, move, good, Karen.
All in favor say aye. Any question, pass, unanimous.
Pretty good work here, Mr. Chapman, I'm telling you that.
Hey, listen, you put the pressure on me, you got select meeting, day, bragging about.